Hello, I'm Catherine Davis, a member of the League of Women Voters Rochester. I would love to like to welcome all of you tonight, the candidates, the audience and those viewing at a later time to this forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters Rochester. We'd also like to thank our generous partners of tonight's forum, the Rochester Post Bulletin, the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, and the Rochester Public Library for their help. Due to the current pandemic, we are limiting attendees to the candidates and necessary volunteers. Guidelines for social distancing and the wearing of masks are also being followed. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer organization organized at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. While we as a league do study and take stands on issues, we never support or endorse political parties or candidates. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of LWV Rochester or any partner or sponsor of this forum, and the sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. It is our purpose in sponsoring this forum to provide you with an opportunity to hear the candidates discuss face-to-face issues that are important to you. Tonight's questions have come from LWV Rochester, the Post Bulletin, the Chamber of Commerce, and members of the public. As there is never enough time to cover all issues in a limited time and setting such as this, please feel free to contact the candidates' campaign headquarters directly if your question is not addressed tonight. We'd like to thank all candidates for running for office, for offering to serve their community, and for the enormous time, dedication, and commitment that running and serving demand. We encourage our members as individuals, as we encourage all of you, to get involved in your community and political party of your choice. We welcome you to tonight's forum, which features the candidates for City Council Ward 6. Candidates for the seat are Molly Dennis and Craig Uglund. Each candidate will have two minutes to offer an opening statement. The candidates will then respond and turn to questions provided by LWV Rochester, this evening's partners, and by the public, which were submitted in advance. Candidates will have 75 seconds to answer. The candidates will then have two minutes each to make closing statements. I would like to suggest to the candidates that you make your answer as succinct as possible. It isn't necessary to use the entire time for your answer, but please finish your sentence when your time is up. We would like to cover as many questions as possible. Each candidate also has three 30-second rebuttal cards. These can be used at any point after each candidate has answered the question. Only one rebuttal card may be used per question. Please put the card in the basket after you have used it. Timekeeper for tonight is LWV Rochester member Anna Sanchez. Questions from the public were checked to ensure they follow our guidelines by LWV Rochester members Maggie Brimajoin, Jane Callahan, Deb Duffy-Smet, and Kathy Swessel. Asking questions will be Randy Peterson from the Rochester Post Bulletin and Sam Gill from the Chamber of Commerce. And with that, candidate Uglund will begin their opening statement.
Good evening, and thank you to the league, the Post Bulletin, the Chamber, and the Rochester Library. My goal with my campaign and my candidacy is to regain trust for our city council. Through a lot of community input, I feel that people are upset with the direction of our current council, the progressive agenda that's being pushed, and the reckless spending that's been happening with our tax dollars. I can lead us back to efficiently running our city with no political agenda. I've been involved in our community for well over a decade, with many volunteer organizations leading several of them. I'm familiar with all the wards around Rochester, but specifically Ward 6, as I was born and raised in Ward 6. People are tired of platitudes, buzzwords, and promises. I am here to deliver answers and results. I've been in the construction and real estate business for approximately 25 years in Rochester. To me, that makes me an expert in our housing, and I feel that that will help facilitate actual changes and additions of workforce housing in Rochester. I ask for your votes, honor before November 3rd, and for more information, please visit voteugland.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Dennis.
Thank you so much. Thank you to the League of Women, thank you to Rochester Chamber of Commerce, thank you for, I mean, there's so many people to thank. Thank you, thank you Post Bulletin and the library, which has been a staple of so many lives. But I also want to make sure I thank everyone for watching, because this is a time, a pivotal time, one of the most important elections that we will face in our lifetime, and by listening means that you're actively engaged, and this is, fighting complacency and apathy is so important, so thank you. And I also want to thank Mr. Uglund, who has been on this journey since the beginning, all the other Ward 6 candidates were amazing before the primary, and then we continue on. And I know there's been some, kind of mean-hearted emails and some yard signs stolen, but Mr. Uglund has been an amazing opponent. He's been upright, forth, and connected. And as a Girl Scout leader, my co-leader is his neighbor during the pandemic. He actually helped the troop deliver cookies. He's a wonderful neighbor, and we just differ on some of our values, and I think values are the most important thing. The issues will change, but values, how you vote on those, are what we want to vote on for our next leaders. This is a huge storm, people are suffering, they're lonely, scared, it's an uncertain time. I know these issues, because I work hard every day as a stakeholder. I live these, to make ends meet, to try to balance working, working parents and essential worker on a low wage. I am a visionary leader, I look for the, at the big picture. I'm an activist in our community, hosting National Out yesterday, and volunteer experiences throughout my life. And so I want to speak up for you, empower your voice, and I'm going to show up every day and fight for you, Ward 6, and for the city of Rochester to succeed together. Thank you.
Thank you. Our first question will come to you first, candidate Dennis. What is the most important issue that you plan to tackle?
This question is a difficult question, because we have a workforce housing shortage, we have issues in transportation, we have childcare accessibility that is not available, affordable to many families. There's so many issues, so this is the one time that I have to say that I am kind of a political answer here, because we're in an interconnected web. It's complex issues. We need to trust the experts, we need to, every day, look at what we can do to keep people above water, because the most important thing is people, small businesses, to make sure that they stay afloat in this crisis and every crisis to come. I believe collaboration is the key, we need to work with government agencies, we need to have people come to the roundtable, have discussions, empower voices on virtual roundtables and physical ones safely, so that we can hear your issues, know the barriers. Barriers are not created equal. We have digital divides, we have a lot of different, and of course, the unveiling of the, needed to look at the equity, justice, transparency, the environment, education, through every decision we make. So I would say that the number one is to keep people above water, small businesses, and so that everyone can make it through this storm together. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Uglund.
Thank you. So, as Molly has spoke about as well, is everything is interwoven, and I think there are several very, very important issues. Transportation to me is super important, of course, economic recovery after COVID. But for me, with my background, my focus is going to be on true workforce housing, and how we can streamline the city systems to bring costs down. Any cost that the city imposes on a builder or developer gets forwarded right onto the homeowner, to the end user, and that's a large part of our problem. Plus, we need to diversify our housing, we need to stop focusing on just downtown, and we need to start building outside of downtown, infill construction, and also in new developments as well. So that's my main focus within everything, but of course, there are lots and lots of topics that need to be addressed.
Candidate Dennis.
All right. I'm using my rebuttal card really quick, because I have something to chime in. I am working full-time for the Rochester School District, which I will, I let them know I'm going to take a leave of absence if hired, because I do not want to have a conflict of interest. And I looked at the policy of the ethics policy, and it states, pretty much to summarize, to avoid making decisions of anything that affects you specifically or personally, to provide you specific benefit. I believe on the council, decisions that are going to be made, that are for like making subdivisions, developers, Mr. Uglund has said that in a previous forum, that his friends were the world, so I feel like
Thank you. Thank you, candidate Dennis.
We know where money comes from and money goes, so thank you.
All right. This next question begins with candidate Uglund. Do you feel the city too often hires outside consultants, and is this a symptom of under-hiring needed staff?
Yes, I do believe the city hires way too many outside consultants. I think that we really need to give a little bit of preferential treatment to our local engineers, architects, and whatnot, and I think we need to refocus our city staff to get away from the pet projects and focus on what they really need to do. If we do need to hire more city staff, then so be it, because that's going to be a lot cheaper than hiring outside consultants, but I think we should first start focusing on hiring local consultants, because the money that we spend with local consultants will then be spent back in our community. And I do have time left, so I am going to address Molly's comments. I've been a Realtor for six years. I am not a big-time Realtor, I am comfortable with what I have, and I don't feel that there's a conflict of interest. If that's truly an issue, then really, nobody on the city council should work for Mayo, because most decisions on the council affect Mayo in one way or another. So I don't feel it's a conflict of interest, I don't represent any new construction builders, so I don't think that that should be of any concern, and if it is, I would
Thank you. Thank you, candidate Uglund. Thank you. Our next question will be asked by Randy Peterson of the Post Bulletin, and candidate Dennis, you will begin.
The consultant's question?
Oh, I am so sorry. My apologies. My apologies, candidate Dennis.
No, this is rebuttal cards, I mean, it's a new thing to me, too. Yes, a consultant, I believe for a smart person, a smart government, a smart business, knows their limitations, knows what they can do and what they need help doing. So the questions, to ask the right question is, I think, the main priority, is to say, is this something that we can do? Do we have the expertise to do this? If we don't, we listen to the experts, we find the people who are the best of the best to find the best solutions. And so I would say, we do need consultants, we do need to hire when we don't have the answer, but like I talked about, empowering diverse and new voices here in the community is essential. We need to look at training, we need to look at opportunities and barriers that cause people not to have the opportunities to succeed, and we need to hire as much as we can here in Rochester, but also know the limitations, humble enough to say we need to learn. And so that's, so consultants, and then I also, just to keep on that issue, unlike Mayo Clinic, when we vote on housing issues, that directly affects Realtors. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Dennis. Now, we're going to go to Randy Peterson from the Post Bulletin, and candidate Dennis, you will begin.
At times, relationships between county commissioners and Rochester City Council members appear strained. What would you do to improve communication and relationships with the county's elected officials?
You know, this also brings me back. I love to analyze old forums, because I talk fast and I kind of like want to make sure I, you know, everything was covered, but that was another thing. KEL did a wonderful forum as well, it's wonderful to have local news, and they asked a similar question, and Mr. Uglund's response was, we need to get together outside the office, putting the cameras and the social media away. And I believe in very open meeting laws, I believe that we need to never put the camera away, we need to always have a recording of collaboration, and be forthright to say transparency is trust. Look at my website, I talk a lot on that, about who I am, we need to know who our candidates are. And when we looked at building relationships, we need to do every way we can build relationships. We need to look at listening posts, we need to look at the COVID distance coffees, we need to get community involvement, empower, because the voices of our community, because without the creative minds, we won't find the solutions. So I'm a huge, that's a platform, that's a huge passion of mine, is building those relationships, and building those partnerships, and being together as a community transparently, so we can all succeed together. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Uglund.
So regarding my comments, and the reason I made those comments at our last live debate is, the point of removing the social media and cameras is so that, following open meeting laws, not talking about business, not talking about the city or the county, talking to each other, and getting to know each member of the council, the county commissioners, DMC, the school board, it's a lot easier, it's a lot more difficult to be negative towards somebody if you know them personally. And that was my intent with my comments, to get to personally know the other players with city governance and county governance, to build those personal relationships, not talking, not behind-the-door meetings like is still happening now, but just build some type of friendship and camaraderie. I think that's very important for people that are making decisions like this, that they have to, it's a lot harder to talk smack about something to their face than it is on social media, and that's why I made the comment about removing social media cameras. But it's not to hide behind any doors.
Thank you. Our next question will come from Sam Gill of the Chamber of Commerce, and candidate Uglund, you will begin.
How would you evaluate the effectiveness of the current city economic relief programs funded by CARES Act dollars? What additional measures should the city implement to support local small businesses?
So, I understand the intention of the CARES Act dollars, and I think for the most part, they've done a good job, but there are some pretty big issues. I am all for the environment in our parks and whatnot, but I think spending money to plant trees because people were unemployed is the wrong approach. What we needed to do was get those people back working at the businesses that they were trained to do, or their professionalism. I talked to some downtown businesses, and businesses that have been downtown for a long time, and they haven't seen a dime of any assistance whatsoever, and that's very frustrating. And I don't know if, I think we need to be open on who is making these decisions, on what businesses were able to get this money. I think, you know, everybody screams transparency, but who is making those decisions? Who is approving, you know, new board members of a huge, of DMC Economic Board? Why are these things not being done publicly? And, so I think the intention was good, but the execution is a little bit lacking.
Thank you. Candidate Dennis.
Just to understand the question, it's, I could repeat it, one, oh, sorry, thank you, one more time.
How would you evaluate the effectiveness of the current city economic relief programs funded by CARES Act dollars? What additional measures should the city implement to support local small businesses?
Okay, yeah, sometimes there's so many issues, I kind of veer off a little bit, but that is kind of one of those questions that is very individualistic to each business, each area. To find the effectiveness of the CARES dollars is to look on each of the line items, on what it is handling. I have mentioned this before, the budget is amazing, I have it here to reference if needed, partial of the 390 pages, it is detailed, a full-time job, full-time to analyze and go through where we can cut wasteful spending, where we can look at what are needs and what are wants. There are, I know from a limited income, there is a very big difference between needs and wants, and right now, the needs of our community is to keep people above water. The needs of our community is to put our money where our mouth is, and invest in diversity, equity, justice programs, education, environment, things that are going to benefit us as a collective human family. And so those are, those are needs, and yes, we need to shave off a lot of wants, we need to make sure that everything that we spend every dollar on, CARES included, city, state, it's all one, it's all money, that we need to look at very analytically through the lens of effectiveness. So I would say it's individualistic to each specific area of the CARES funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question will start with candidate Dennis. Should Rochester have a $15-an-hour minimum wage?
You know, sometimes I get excited when I hear questions that are just like, oh, of course, yes, it's, it's not rocket science. If you want to lift people out of poverty, you give them livable wages, wages that can affect their livelihood, where they, how they can pay the bills so they don't get evicted. These are, this is something that we, as a country, has fallen far behind. We need to look at how we're going to end issues, like people facing homelessness, end issues. How do we end these kind of interconnected issues? We end poverty is a good start, and that is what we can do with a minimum, universal wage that's higher. And of course, we look at the small businesses, we get all the stakeholders at the table, we have you come in and say, how is this going to affect, what can we do to make this work? Because we want to make sure that small businesses aren't impacted, we want to make sure everyone stays above water. But I'm thinking that if we increase the tide in the storm, this is the time to do it, during crisis is the time we can make big dreams, and lobby, and be an active voice for a better tomorrow. Find out who we are, what we want to do with our finite time on this planet, and make it better for everyone to succeed together. So yes, I would increase the wage. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Uglund.
I think we have to tread very lightly. I don't think the answer is simply raising the minimum wage to $15. I think we need to concentrate more on bringing people that are underemployed up to their full potential. I've worked with the Minnesota Veterans Rehabilitation Center, and that was their big push, is veterans coming back from war, and they are underemployed for their abilities, and that's what I really think we need to do. There are so many job openings in the trades, but people don't want to work for it, and that's what we really need to start pushing. It's not that four-year degree in college for everybody. So we need to look outside the box, and we need to look at what's happened in cities that have done the $15 minimum wage, and what's happening, you know, restaurant employees aren't getting the increases, they're just getting fired, and computers are coming in to replace them, because computers are going to be cheaper than a $15 wage. But if you want to do that, then you're going to have to be willing to pay $45 for a burger, because those costs are going to be passed on to the consumer all across the board.
Thank you. Candidate Dennis.
Yeah, so, kind of, I just want to chime in, this is a time when we rethink, this is, this is changing, our lives are changing, we are unfamiliar territory, jobs are going to change, we need critical and creative minds to find how we can keep people above water. We don't keep people down in poverty wage. I talk about my wage being under $15,000 a year, working full-time, like 700 of my essential worker coworkers. Unlivable wages create poverty, and so I agree, times are changing, jobs are changing, we need to find, collaborate, and find the creative minds, which we have here in Rochester, to overcome that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question will start with candidate Uglund. Lack of affordable workforce housing has been a problem from years, from apartments to duplexes, in townhomes, to starter homes on small lots. What measures do you favor to increase the supply of affordable homes, such as changes in zoning or building codes, helping residents with repairs, incentives for builders, et cetera?
Well, there's lots of answers to this, and I just, the number one is the community development needs to be looked at. They've had proposals given to them by a very smart committee on how to streamline the system. We need to look at what is happening with all of the fees that they're getting. Our building department should not be a profit generator for the city. They need to cover their costs to provide a service, but we should not be making money off of builders, because the builders aren't eating these costs, those costs are completely getting pushed onto the end user. So that needs a big look at. The city is probably the biggest landowner in town, some of that land is very buildable, and we need to use some of that land for some of these workforce housing projects. We've got one in Molly and I's neighborhood, the city cleared out a swath of trees two years ago, and it's just that empty grass, and you could easily pop four to six twin homes, affordable, small twin homes on those. And that's another thing, is reducing some of the restrictions, zero outlines, lower the minimum square footage size, all of these things to help make it more affordable to build these houses, because those will get passed on to the end user. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Candidate Dennis.
Okay, well, I, thank you, I know, I mentioned this before, I'm a stakeholder, because I, you know, I'm there with many, many others who paycheck to paycheck, and of course, please look at the finance reports that they come out to see who's funding our candidates. But I want to say, you know, affordable housing, place identity is our identity. We need to look at having everyone, everyone have a place to live, and so redefine affordable housing, because what is it really? Is it how much we can sell a house for, or is it the cost of actually living in a house? It takes $9,000 to have a vehicle. So we need to make sure affordable housing is in access to a healthy food, daycare, transportation, because I went to the affordable housing, I went to view and listened to developers, and they're not close to any of those. Affordable housing is the, having a quality housing, it's also looking at working with the county. The county works with affordable housing, which is like 30% of the income lower, city works with workforce housing. We want to work together, this is an issue for the greater good, so we want to collaborate with great minds, we want to look at what affordable housing, and of course, use block rents, ADUs, rezoning, fees, look at evaluating, making fees neutral, costs neutral. We want to look at the challenges, we want to look at all the available options to make affordable housing a reality for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like the rebuttal.
Oh, yes.
You mentioned a few things there, and the bus transit is one of them, and I'm vehemently opposed to the bus rapid transit. The reason is, those buses are not flexible. If you really want the buses to get to the affordable housing, you need to get them off of Second Street and get them into the neighborhoods with the lower rents, 41st Street, Eighteen and a Half Avenue, they're all over the place, but that system cannot get people into those, the BRT is not going to help the true low-income people. Also, we need to get these low, the best way to lift people out of poverty is to get them into homes. Homeownership is the best way to get yourself out of poverty.
Great, thank you. All right. This next question will start with candidate Dennis. There, let me see, I had lost my, oh, here it is. When is your position regarding, what is your position regarding odd-even parking restrictions versus using a snow emergency declaration when warranted for snow removal?
You know, this is a huge issue with the war, everyone, I think. We walk around, I walk around with my kids and walk around the neighborhood and ask people, what are the big issues here? And they have a little bit of issues with plows, because no one really knows, we have to make sure that we have safety, of course, for the amazing plow drivers, and for the residents, and we need to make sure that And, and we need to make sure that, if you clear a certain section of the road, we can have water that will be clogged with leaves and stuff. We want to make sure we have enough, you know, the emergency vehicles, things to get through. This is, these are all priorities. So I would work with the mayor, I would work with the city to, just, all, just to see what we can do to, you know, best meet the needs. Because safety is always number one. When you look at anything, when you look at transportation, when you look at housing, when you look at anything, safety is number one. And so I would have to look more further into the idea, the options of snow removal, trust the experts who have that as their field, and find all the options with, of course, community and involvement, and empower the voices of Ward 6, so that you have a say in what happens with the snow removal of plows and your, and, and your community. So, thank you.
Candidate Uglund.
From talking to people on the streets, our community has spoken, and they don't like the odd-even parking. A comment was made when this was started, that we need to start it that early in the fall to train our citizens on how to do it. That is ludicrous. We have a very smart community. We need to trust our community, that they can pay attention and learn that if there is snow on the ground, that's more than a set amount, two inches or three inches or whatever, you need to move your vehicle to a certain side of the road. But we don't need to have that enforced for seven months of the year. There's another reason, there's another issue with this, and they talk about lowering our speed limits on our side streets to 20 or 25 miles an hour. And another way to slow traffic is to constrict our roadways. But when we have this odd-even parking for half the year, every one of our streets is made eight feet wider, because vehicles can only park on one side. So what happens when the roadway is wider? People drive faster. So it's counterproductive for what the city's trying to do, to slow people down. It's common sense. And people don't need to be trained on what side of the street to park on. If there's a snow emergency, you know, people know what to do, and they'll, after one or two, they'll get it figured out pretty quick. But I don't think we need to train people for months on end to do that.
Great, thank you. Our next question will come from the Post Bulletin, and candidate Uglund, you will begin.
What can a city council member do to improve residents' ability to engage with city government?
Well, I think, obviously, the council representatives have to be open and communicative. I have been very purposeful in answering every email, every phone call, every message I've gotten, within at least 24 hours, if not 12. I know that that was lacking from our previous council representative, and that's very important to people. Whether you're a business owner, a homeowner, a visitor, if you have questions, those questions need to be answered. And for me, that's, that's my career. If I don't answer the phone, I'm going to lose a customer. So I answer my phone unless I'm with another customer. So that, to me, is A, number one, is respond back to people. Number two, make yourself available. Because of my schedule, I am extremely flexible, and I don't have an issue with being a Realtor and doing, putting in the time that this job truly requires. I have that flexibility. And I'm very fortunate that, that I have the wife that I do that is there to help me out when I do need to make an appointment. And I can't thank her enough for being behind me on this endeavor, so.
Thank you. Candidate Dennis.
Thank you. You know, challenges are not created equal. We are, our country has been founded on the weight and power of institutional racism, so a lot of people don't have the opportunities because of the history of, of lack of access to credits and other issues that, that have caused unfair advantages to some. And so we have a lot of issues with barriers. And so we need to look at that issue as well when we, we try to outreach and connect. Like I mentioned last night, like many other times, I hosted Nationalite Out, and, and police came and talked to the community, we connected, very social-distanced. And, and we need to do all of these way, public townhouses, connections with listening posts like they do at my work at Riverside and other schools. We, we get the input of others through every different possible way. It's a full-time job. And that was what Mr. Uglund was mentioning with Councilmember Johnson. She is not rerunning, running for reelection because she has another job. It's impossible to have two full-time jobs during a crisis and a pandemic. Many people call to tell me their problems, and I talk for hours on the phone, because this is a full-time job. And so it is going to be my full-time job to be your representative, Ward 6. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question will come from the Chamber of Commerce, and candidate Dennis, you will begin.
Even before the COVID pandemic, Rochester's small businesses were faced with rising costs. Now, as many of these businesses look to recover from the pandemic, it is crucial that the city work with these organizations to promote a climate that is conducive to recovery. As a member of the city council, what steps would you take to support these businesses and reduce the cost of doing business in Rochester?
Oh, yeah. Another very complex issue. It's very, many businesses do many different things, so we need to be very intentional to learn the challenges. Have the stakeholders, the small businesses, at the round tables to, to tell about what they need, and what help they need, and, and have a voice in our government. I would also say with, with small businesses in particular, we want to be safe. We want to be safe and open up safely, and, and so of course, enforce laws that, that are for safety of mask mandates, things like that. So we want to look at that. Small businesses, I, I've done a lot of research on the budget and, and what we can do with, you know, help with economic development. But we, you know, it, it really just comes down to actively listening with the intent to, to, to bring back your issues and your barriers. And so I don't know, to answer the question, it's, it's, small businesses, we need to build safety, complete the construction, the roads, things that are downtown. We need to have partnerships, keep businesses open, promote health and safety. It's not a one-size-fits-all. This is, the, small businesses are the lifeline of our economy, and an incredible priority during a pandemic. Because without small businesses, people can't survive and stay above water. So, thank you.
Candidate Uglund.
Kind of a contradiction from what I just heard, is you say you can talk on the phone for hours, but then you talk about listening. And I think it's really important to truly listen. And I've been doing that. I've talked to businesses downtown, and I've talked to businesses outside of downtown, and they are so frustrated right now, frustrated right now. The, their taxes are going up 10%, and then the RDA comes in for another 8%? Because the RDA lost, lost income from doing Thursdays on first? That's not right. We need to put a freeze on those increased taxes to let these businesses recover. And instead of people asking for discounts and mail asking for businesses to give their employees discounts, mail needs to encourage their employees to support these businesses. Because if these businesses downtown and elsewhere go under because people aren't going out to them, downtown is done. And I think a lot of that comes too from how the city has approached it, and the scare tactics of saying, there's a couple bars with COVID, but they wouldn't say who they were. Those, all those restaurants downtown were empty for two days. That is not leadership.
Thank you. Candidate Dennis with a rebuttal.
Yes, I just have to clarify, the word "talking" on the phone is, is, it's talking is, is being available to listen. And many essential workers have called me with issues like domestic abuse, things that are happening in their homes that, that are related to COVID, mental health issues. We need to validate and normalize. If you look, I'm a biology teacher by trade, genetic issues that are, the trauma that's going to be in people's genes and affecting crime in the future. We also need to look, unlike Mr. Uglund, I, I want affordable transportation, which will help small businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
I'd like to rebuttal that. I'm not sure where it comes, I don't want affordable transportation. I want transportation that gets to the people that need it the most. And part of that is not spending $120 million on BRT, but let's put that money into our current system. Getting smaller buses to, to meet the more distant or remote neighborhoods, but getting those buses to the low-income residents that truly need it. Not the West Lot on Second Street.
Thank you. Candidate Uglund, this question comes to you first. What is your opinion of the DMC plan and its effect on the city of Rochester? Would you like to see changes in the plan?
I think that the, the intention of DMC is good, and we need to understand that DMC is an economic developer for creating businesses in the DMC district. Now, with that being said, they can pretty much district anything. So if they wanted to put a district on, in Essex Park or Essex area, they can do that. But without doing that, that has to have board approval from DMC. DMC can't touch those things outside of downtown. I think, like I said, I think the idea is good, but the execution is lacking. Lack of transparency, lack of true input from the residents of Rochester. And I, the, the new placement of their new executive officer that was not open, that wasn't approved by the DMC board, that wasn't approved by the city council or the county commissioners, completely non-transparent. And I would, I would like to see an audit of DMC to make sure that we know where all of that money is coming from and going to.
Thank you. Candidate Dennis.
Yeah. Thank you. We're, again, are in our uncharted territory. Jobs are changing. That's why I do support the transportation, because I believe we look into the future, look at hope, and, and we can have small businesses lined up against, along the lines of the rapid transit system, helping bring people into town when hopefully this pandemic subsides. I believe that we need to work very closely with the DMC. DMC has done amazing things for Rochester. We need to look at every dollar, just like Mr. Uglund, get community support, not just the downtown, but our residential areas. We need to, can't focus on the luxury apartments. We need to look at where the money is being spent. So I, I believe very strongly, there's millions of dollars that are state-funding, billions in private investors. This is, this is a huge involvement with the city, to collaborate and have partnerships, and, and help DMC see, make sure that we can raise up the, the unheard voices, the minority voices, the voices of the Black Indigenous people of color, and have them in leadership positions. We need to, to work closely with, with economic, the, the third parties maybe to come in and evaluate how things are going, because this is the time for big change, and we can do it together. Thank you.
Thank you. This next question will come, is actually from the public, and candidate Dennis, you will begin. How should Rochester ensure financing for quality-of-life items such as library, parks, theater, art, and music?
Oh, well, I'm a big fan. I'm a big fan, you look at the, the things the Art Center brings, the library here, I would beg, literally from the summer program. A lot, a lot of amazing things to, and, and help multiculturalism, to cultural awareness, to help people have a place, one of the few places, like the library, where we can go without spending money, and truly be a community, a place of belonging, to help us heal from isolation and loneliness. Nationalite Out, I talked to a lot of neighbors who were so thrilled because they were so sad. This, this is a, this is a tough time, anxiety and depression. And when my friend in Ward 6 ended his life, I went to, in line, to, in a, in a store to help get some food for his family, and I talked to nurses. And they are, the fatigue, the fatigue of having not COVID and taking care of people. My hat's off to every essential worker who are putting themselves on the front line. I would, I would say, back to the, the library and music, we need to promote the arts, because they, all of those wonderful people in those fields have been hit very hard by the pandemic. So I, I would, I would say, true democracy is where we aren't predetermined by our birth, where we can get together in our, in our society and our community together, like places like those. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Uglund.
Well, I, first off, I want to touch on the fact that it's, it's not just nurses as essential workers that we're putting in the extra hours. My wife is a male, she's not a nurse, and she didn't get a day off. There's a lot of people. Technically, Realtors were an essential worker. But I don't want to claim that, because I feel that that takes credit away from our healthcare workers and our law enforcement and our first responders. But as far as vitalizing our arts and, and library and whatnot, I think we really need to take a look at what we have. We've got an unbelievable, you know, civic center that is completely underutilized. Why is that? And that's not just this year. Tens of millions of dollars invested, and they upped their prices so much that they pushed out events that had been held there for decades. So it doesn't pay us any money if it's empty. We need to relook at the pricing structure so that we can get real concerts in, to get good art exhibits in. You know, the library needs some updating. Very simple, let's get a door in from the parking ramp so people don't have to go outside. Think outside the box and use what we have before we build new.
Thank you, candidate Uglund. This next question will actually begin with you, candidate Uglund. Do you fully, support fully funding 125 Live for our seniors?
Yes, with clarification. I got to tour 125 Live after our first debate there, and it was an eye-opening experience. It is not just for seniors. That, that facility is available for our entire community. It's, their percentage of seniors is actually declining because they're getting so many other new members. People can go there for some great, great things. Fitness, woodworking, pool, art, ceramics, all kinds of things. And that is really a, a new center for, for our artists in Rochester. And their newer XO has done a great job of reprioritizing space to fit the needs of the more popular items. And I think the city needs to be very cautious of, of hurting that relationship, because it is such a great asset. And for Ward 6, that steps outside of our ward boundaries. Why would we not utilize that? The, I'm part of the Elton Hills Neighborhood Association, and we've teamed up with 125 Live, because they're doing the work, and we can literally walk across the river and enjoy it. So I know that there's some bad blood there, and I really think it needs to be mended and move forward for the better.
Thank you. Candidate Dennis.
Thank you. I too am a huge fan of 125 Live. I actually was a member for a short time, then of course, financial hardships and things happen. So we, I, I've used the amazing facility, it's a fabulous place, I think we can do more with it as a place of belonging. We can add cultural awareness, we can be involved to bring people together in a safe, I see, I see the mayor outside, other people doing the exercise outside in the parking lot in, in nice weather, this, a couple weeks ago. My, I have three children who are in three different public schools, amazing public schools. And, and two of my children had PTA event, where I volunteered with the PTA, where they had, right on the side of 125 Live, had a movie night, which was a social-distance, amazing gathering to get people together. That's wonderful. PTA involvement with the schools, collaboration, it's a great organization. So I would like to see it even used more, and of course, funded, so that we can utilize places that we can heal from this trauma, because people are lonely and scared. And this is, this is a real issue, anxiety, mental health, wellness. We need to focus on keeping people here together so that we can succeed in the future. So yes, I'm a big supporter of the arts and of 125 Live.
Thank you. This next question will begin with candidate Dennis. How does the Rochester community make sure we never have a George Floyd incidence?
This is where I, I have to not talk with everything I want to say, because this is a moral outrage. This, there, I want to call out the names of every single Black man, a woman, who has been killed because of this color of their skin. We need to, to have, elect leaders who have this on the tip of their tongue. We need to have a system, we have to know that systematic racism exists, that we have been founded on a country with institutional segregation, that, this is an issue where, I, I've said this example before, but it's a quick example, where, where I'm, I'm driving in my van near dusk, and I'm driving with my daughter. My two sons are running door-to-door, dropping off literature, helping me, helping their mother run for office, and I never once were scared for their, their safety, because they have white skin. We need to make sure that no mother, no father is scared for the safety of their children, looking at police reform, look at collaboration. We need to help police officers stay above water as well. We have a great chief, and, and we started out on the right foot. But we also need to make sure that, that But we also need to make sure that we understand the barriers, understand our privileges, understand where we're coming from so that we can come together and never have this tragedy happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Uglund.
So Molly touched on this. And I think the hiring of Chief Franklin and the election of Kevin Torreson have been great additions to our community law enforcement. Chief Franklin has adopted some new theories that have been working very well. He's been increasing the diversity in the city police force. But I think the, one of the most important things, again, is to listen to our community members. I'm not an expert on racial diversity for sure. And I think a great step is getting that diversity director hired. And I've mentioned it before and I've spoke with Donovan Bailey and I think he would be a wonderful candidate for that position because he's passionate about it and he's lived it. I think that we need to be, we need to hold our law enforcement accountable, but we also need to support them. We need to remove the bad cops, but 99.9% of them are good. They're our neighbors, they're our friends, they're our family members. They're trying to protect us and they just want to get home at the end of the night. And I think we've done a great job of the community relationships with our police. And I think a big part of that is adding school resource officers. The statistics from the students have proven that the vast majority of students over 90% want school resource officers.
Thank you, candidate Uglund. All right, our next question will come from the Post Bulletin. And candidate Uglund, you will begin.
What, if any, incentives would you support to encourage property owners to maintain and restore designated historic buildings in the city?
Can you repeat that one more time? I'm sorry.
No problem. What, if any, incentives would you support to engage property, to encourage property owners to maintain and restore designated historic buildings in the city?
Well, I know who asked this question. I'll assume I know who asked this question. So, you know, we've got a few blocks of some beautiful old buildings. And I would hate to see those razed for new development. I think there is a way to save the feel of them, you know, Historic Third, that is a jewel of Rochester. And I would hate to see, and I don't think any of those business owners have any desire of tearing those buildings down. But we also have to be mindful that people buy buildings for their own personal reasons. So there's a fine line to walk. You have to have buy-in from those owners. I don't know specifically what the incentive is, but we have to be very careful that just because a building's old doesn't make it historic. And I think the city's dropped the ball with, I believe it was the Crawford House or Cromwell House in Kotsky Park. Tragic loss to the community that that home was just left in disrepair. And I think that was a lack of leadership in many areas of the city. So I don't have the answer, but you know, there's a lot of moving parts there. And I want to hear more from all sides of that before I would make an exact determination.
Thank you. Candidate Dennis.
Yes, the Historical Committee is very passionate. And I've talked to members who want to see our history preserved. And I'm a fan of making sure that we don't, I listened to Teddy Roosevelt and when he talked about the Grand Canyon, which of course is different than this, but he talked about not developing on the Grand Canyon so that other people can enjoy it. This is similar in a way that we want to make sure that history, the history that is preserved for future generations, just because a homeowner does not want to, you know, wants to add a big addition. Maybe 100 years from now, somebody wants to see the historical building intact. So we have to look at environmental factors. We want to look at how we can keep our houses environmental, you know, progressive, not just net zero, but become net positive with our infrastructure. But yes, I would support working with the mayor, making sure that when, our committee is very divided right now. So we want to make sure that there are stakeholders, that people are on the planning committee so that we can have voices to speak to the challenges and what wishes are. But I think if you're buying a home in the Historical District, to have that upfront and say, you know, this is something that maybe grandchildren might want to experience as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question will come from the chamber. And candidate Dennis, you will begin.
According to the most recent numbers, Rochester MSA unemployment is sitting at just over 8%. What steps should the city take to support these job seekers and help put our community back to work?
Oh, yeah, that's all interconnected, that we're in a systematic web that we look at what helps small businesses, what helps livable wages. We need to look at the problems through the lens of people who, what would jobs we can bring in to Rochester and help small businesses stay above water. And like I mentioned, the transit line, having small businesses form along that route. So I would, there's no one-size-fits-all, again, we're all in this together. We're a part of humanities, family. We look at it through the lens that we want to do things to benefit, make sure that no one starves, no one, you know, we have food, we have housing. We lift up people in times of crisis because we're in it together. So, you know, with the exact details on how to, you know, training, I'm an educator. Educators are natural innovators. I would look at first, looking at entrepreneurships, ways of retooling people so that we can find and be equipped with the means of having the jobs in the future. And of course, green jobs. Oh, my goodness, I never want to forget about, we have one planet, One Planet, and that's where the money is. Wind energy on Monday, that could have fueled the whole state. We need to tap that for new jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Uglund.
Thank you. Well, first and foremost, we need to let our businesses get back open safely, of course. The city needs to refocus and incentivize new businesses to come into town. Businesses that provide manufacturing, you know, losing the 200-plus jobs from the dairy manufacturers plus Seneca. I mean, that was tens of millions of dollars in lost money in Rochester, Ampe and Libby's, sorry, Ampe's and Kemp. So, you know, we need to get some of those, because those are very livable wage jobs. Those employees that lost there had very healthy incomes. We need to, you know, we have an abundance of leasable space. The Berkman, I don't think that anything has been put into any of those lethal spaces. So you have to be careful about focusing on putting, you know, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of feet under new housing in specific canyons that you're trying to build, hoping to God that businesses are going to come in. And I'll touch on that is, the city hasn't talked to the business owners on Second Street. They're clueless on what's going on right now.
Thank you. And that actually concludes our questions portion of our forum. So we will now hear closing statements from each candidate. Candidates, you will have two minutes each to speak. And candidate Dennis, you will begin.
All right. Thank you again for everyone who's hosted this event and everyone who's listening. This is a very important time in our humanities history. I have worked in Washington DC researching. I know how important involvement is. I've taught overseas. I see a global visionary perspective of challenges. I want to just emphasize, please, everyone, know where money is coming from and where money is spent in these elections because that shows our priorities in the election. So please keep a note of that. Also, something that wasn't brought up is, see who shows up, which candidate showed up to the Black Lives Matter protests and rallies? Who showed up to the Pride rallies? Who showed up to hosting National Out to get involvement? Who volunteers in their grassroots? Look at the candidates and who is actually the activists in the trench, making this world better. And I also want to say, money doesn't buy elections, doesn't win elections, they buy them, they don't win them. Votes do. And I want to say, I've been endorsed by amazing different groups like the Justice for Rochester and the Sierra Club. But I also want to say, I was endorsed by the current city council member, Annalisa Johnson, and the former city council member, Sandra Aminz. Both of those council members know what it takes to be on the council. They know the challenges and they both said that I am the best candidate for the job. So I want to say thank you to both of those great leaders. And I want everyone to look at where money comes from. Look at who's running, what the passion and the visionary outlook for the future. And so I'm a community activist, like I mentioned. I'm a visionary leader. I am a stockholder in this. I'm running for my children and your children and every child regardless of the circumstances of their birth, because everyone needs to succeed together. I want to amplify the voices of the underrepresented. I want to speak up for those quiet voices, the elderly and the children. And I want to empower your voice, Ward Six, so we all can come together and succeed. Thank you. I wish you happy health and happiness, health and hope. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Candidate Uglund.
What I am trying to bring back to the city council is competency, great communication, and cooperation between all of our entities. The donors that are donating to me are doing so because they believe in those same things. I see serving on the city council as a civic duty. It's not about increasing my income. If that was the case, you couldn't pay somebody enough to do that job for all the work that's truly involved. I'm not about platitudes and buzzwords and promises. I'm about answers and results. I've put in thousands, if not tens of thousands of hours volunteering specifically for our veterans for the last 14 years. I've put on the miles, I've stood in the flaglines, I've helped the families when their loved ones have been deployed. And I've received that call at 3:00 in the morning from a veteran that was ready to pull the trigger. I've been in the trenches. I've proven my leadership in those organizations. I am very passionate about making Rochester the best place that it can be for our kids and our parents. We need to refocus. We need to get away from the pet projects. We need to get away from the political agendas. We need to concentrate on our public safety, our public roads, our public works, parks and trails, and economic development. Enough of the pet projects. Like I said, I've proven my volunteer work. You can get more information on the specific groups on my website, voteugland.com. Please vote on competency, communication, and collaboration. I ask for your vote, honor, before November 3rd. And you can get plenty of information on my website, voteugland.com. And specifically, if you want to reach out, my phone number and email are both on there.
Thank you. I would like to thank each of the candidates for participating in tonight's forum. Thank you for your service to the community and for your willingness to participate in the democratic process by running for office. I would like to remind you that the views expressed in the forum tonight were those of the candidates, not those of LWV Rochester or any partner or sponsor of the forum. Thank you to our partners, the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, the Rochester Post Bulletin, and the Rochester Public Library. Remember that Election Day is November 3rd and that early voting has started. If you have voted by absentee ballot and would like to change your ballot based on what you learned tonight, visit mnvotes.org for more information on the process. Please remember to vote. If you have questions about your polling place or would like to see your sample ballot, visit vote411.org. To see this forum again, access the forums from the Rochester Public Library website. Good night, everyone.